Good evening and welcome to the August 11th, 2014 Valley View School Board Meeting. I would ask Member Vinegas to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Salt Rice, please.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Felice, could you read the board affirmation statement, please?
Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared for college and a successful life academically, socially, and emotionally, as well as equipped with the necessary tools to have options and make decisions about their long-term goals. This will be accomplished by believing and working towards all students learning through rigorous curricula and meaningful, effective instruction consequently demonstrating mastery on high-quality assessments with all stakeholders being held accountable throughout the process.
Thank you. Down to the agenda. Dr. Mitchum, agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to ask that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Motion seconded. There is discussion about the agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next on the agenda, Treasurers' Report. Mr. Brizafi.
The Treasurers' Report, Action 5.1 for the month of July is included for your information. It includes financial reports, balance sheets, summary of revenue and expenditures, as well as the interim obligation payments for July 2014 totaling $4,594,179.52 for your consideration and action.
Motion to approve Treasurers' Report.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
The schedule of bills for August 2014 from the Education Fund, Operation Building and Maintenance Fund, Transportation Fund, TORT Fund, and Food Service Fund are attached for your consideration and action totaling $1,599,327.73.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion on the schedule of bills? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Action. Information reports 5.3 through 5.6 are for your information. They do include the summary of investments, property taxes received, state funding update, and all schools' trust account activity. And it is worth noting that the state funding update has nothing on it. So that means we are fully paid in full as we sit here today by the State of Illinois. Kind of a watershed moment for us.
It's a rarity in itself. We should be excited, at least to start with the zero O on their part. Any questions on 5.3 to 5.6? Seeing none, moving down the agenda. Consent agenda items. Dr. Mitchum.
Yes, Mr. President. I would like to ask that the board approve consent agenda item 6.1 through 6.3. 6.1, Board Meeting Minutes, July 14, 2014. 6.2, Executive Session Meeting Minutes, July 14, 2014. And 6.3, Student Activity Contract Approval for Lukansic Middle School with Savory Foods.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. At this time, I would like to welcome Gary Hoffman and the Knights of Columbus to come up and please be recognized, from the Romeoville KFC, that is. We always like it when these guys come because they usually bring good tidings.
Show me the light.
I didn't say that. Good tidings.
Good evening. My name's Gary Hoffman. I'm the fundraising chairman for our council. Also, we got Rick Skorsky with us this evening. He's our worthy grand knight of our council. He holds the highest position we have in our council. He's the one that leads us on all the activities and everything like that sorted with the knights. Tootsie Roll Drive, our annual drive, this year, it's the 19th, 20th, and 21st of September. It's always the third weekend in September. It's mandated by the state. Like I say every year, I've personally chaired this event for the last five years. I encourage all the schools that have a special needs program to support this program and volunteer your help. It's a real simple process. The more we collect, the more we can distribute to the schools. And it really doesn't take a lot of effort on your part. Just a few hours. We have street locations and store locations. So it runs all day Friday, basically all day Saturday and all day Sunday till we run out of candy, which we have done the last two years, which is always a good thing. So, and at this time here too, on behalf of our council, I would like to thank all the teachers of the whole district, but especially the ones that have our special needs programs. You guys do a tremendous job. And the commitment and the determination that you have with these kids to provide them the best possible way to lead a normal life, it's my applause. So without further ado, I would like to present some checks. Romeoville High School. Scoff. Brimson. And last, Mount News, RC Bill. By the way, I'll be visiting most of the schools in the next probably two or three weeks to help us. I'll have a scheduled times and whatever you can do, we really appreciate it. Member, it's for the kids. Okay? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I'm sure Mr. Randall will provide a press release in multiple locations to get the information out. Again, this is the kind of stuff that helps our community be what it is. And I certainly want to thank the Knights and Gary and Rick for their time this evening. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. $1,020 for each school. Combined? Well, thank you. Next up, liaison reports. Any and all, please, from my right.
Yes, I have a liaison report. What's happening with my voice? I attended the Board of Directors Retreat on July 25th and 26th at Alexandria, Virginia, which is the location of our National School Board Association. I attended as the Central Region Director of the National Black Council. We just changed from caucus to council of the school board members. There's an Alaska Native Council and there's an Hispanic Council. Our retreat was centered in, and I'm just going to give you some little highlights about things that we talked about, from pipeline to prison is the trend that we're trying to avoid as our educational systems are working with especially our African-American males and our Latino males. Also, the president has put together My Brothers Keeper Task Force. And I just want to read just a few things. The My Brothers Keepers Task Force was established to develop a coordinated federal effort to improve significantly the expected life outcome for boys and young men of color, including African-American, Hispanic-Americans, and Native Americans, and their contribution to the United States so that all youth has an equal opportunity at the American dream. Also, things we talked about was restorative versus the zero tolerance. And a little highlight of that tale of two schools is Carlos arrives at school. Carlos is late to the first period. Carlos get into a minor altercation in the cafeteria. Zero tolerance says he's greeted by metal detectors in a police search. His teacher scolds him in front of the class. Carlos talks back and is given a detention. A school police officer detains and arrests both students. Carlos is held in a juvenile detention facility all afternoon, missing school. He now has an arrest record and is facing suspension. The restorative practice, what we're looking at, says teachers and administrators welcome him and his fellow students as they enter. His teacher waits until after the class to speak to Carlos to learn more and set up a meeting with the school counselor. Student permeators and support staff intervene, having the students sit down together and de-escalate the situation. Carlos and the other students agreed to help clean the cafeteria during a free period. Carlos meets with his counselor and parents after school to help resolve the conflict at home. And so these are things that we looked at and even we talked about. One of our agenda items is about having a director of college and career readiness. So we are, at least in this district, ahead on that area, but we still have some work to do. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Vinegas?
None at this time.
Rick?
Dan?
Couple of things with the Wilco. They're finalizing the negotiations for the teachers there. We should have a final update at our next meeting. And then I believe in talking briefly with Mr. Lopez, they met with the Park District in regards, Gary, with regards to the IGA. I'll be attending the Park District Board Meeting. I think it's on the 21st of this month, if they have any questions and so forth. But nothing, if I can, Gary, Mike, nothing out of the ordinary there, just pretty standard, right?
Just fine tuning is really all we do.
Okay. Thanks. That's all.
President Quigley, I do want to make mention that the funds to take me to Alexandria was paid for by the National School Board Association and not the local taxpayer. So I want that to be clear.
We always like to hear that. Thank you. I have nothing. Action Report Superintendent?
No report.
Thank you. Ms. Kinder?
Yes, sir. With Action Report 11.1, we are seeking authorization for the approval of the Regional Safe School Program Agreement, which indicates that we will be charged tuition for our regional safe school program students beginning this school year, which is fiscal year 15. This will amount to $10 per student per day for the time that the student is enrolled and enrolled at Lincoln School.
I need to back up real quickly. I forgot the audience participation. It kind of got, my notes got over the top of it. Does anybody wishes to address the board this evening? Seeing none, hearing none. We'll move on down, back to the agenda. Rachel, sorry about that.
That's okay. As I mentioned, we are seeking your authorization for the approval of the Regional Safe School Program Agreement with Action Item 11.1.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any comments, questions? This was previously discussed at the last meeting, that there is now a $10 per day per student fee.
That is correct.
Something that was free. This is just another one of those things that when the state gets out of the business of funding education, we get the local, I mean, it's $10 a day, but it's still $10 a day. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
11.2.
Yes, sir. Action Report 11.2, we are seeking your approval and providing these for second reading and approval. Five policies, 2.125 Board Member Expenses, 6.170 Title I Programs, 7.100 Health and Dental Examinations, Immunizations, and Exclusion of Students, and 7.180 Preventing Bullying, Intimidation, or Harassment.
Any discussion? These have all been previously mentioned and discussed, correct?
That is, that is correct. They were prevented for first reading on July 14th.
Thank you. Need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. 11.3, Science Research Methods Courses.
Yes, the final action item this evening is seeking your approval for the adoption of a pilot course, Science Research Methods, for a select group of students for this school year, 2014, 2015. This includes the purchase of the corresponding materials, resources, and support. And summary was provided also at the July 14th School Board Meeting as an information item.
Roll call, or, roll call. I need a motion?
So moved. Oh, motion.
Motion and second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? This has all been discussed previously? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next.
Two actions this evening. 12.1 is a recommendation to approve Resolution 1490, which provides for a transfer of monies from the Operation and Maintenance Fund to the Education Fund for principal and interest obligations. Those obligations are really scheduled to cover the technology initiative that was approved in FY14 for labor and associated materials associated with technology improvements in all of our buildings. This was required to be published in the newspaper, which was done on July 30th. And just so you're aware, for FY15, we'll be doing a direct transfer from the Operation and Maintenance Fund to the Debt Service Fund rather than going from the Operation and Maintenance Fund to the Education Fund and then doing a transfer from the Education to Debt Service. So we're, basically, we did two steps this year, requiring this hearing. Next year, it'll be one step. And as part of the hearing, we are required to request if there's any public comment regarding this transfer. Again, this is a transfer that was budgeted in FY14. This is not something additional. We did, we did miss it, and so we wanted to come back and do it in a more, in a formal fashion, requiring any public comment at this time.
At this time, I would ask if there's anybody from the public who wishes to address this issue. Hearing none, seeing none. Are there any, oh, need a motion to move ahead?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion by the board members? Hearing none, seeing none from the board. Roll call vote, please. Thank you, Gary.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Next, tentative budget. Gary?
Tentative budget for 1415 is as follows. In our expense category, our overall budget, 247,668,000, which does include a debt service payment this year of $25.8 million. And that is really to service all of the outstanding debt and bonds that the district has undertaken over the last many years. Our operating budget, 223,310,000, an increase of 2.7 million or 1.25% over FY14's budget. In terms of revenue changes, the tax levy projected to go up 1.5% or $2.2 million. Corporate personal property replacement taxes, the estimate is out from the Department of Revenue, increase of 3.6% or $350,000. The largest increase in revenue comes in the form of general state aid. We're looking for an increase of $4.5 million, but due to the proration of 89%, that's being proffered up by the State Board of Ed, we could have received as much as $8.2 million. So we're leaving, we're losing, if you will, due to, again, the 89% proration, $3.7 million. And there's an exhibit in the, in the packet kind of outlining that. Other mandated categoricals, such as special education, transportation, no additions. We continue to be prorated in the area of transportation, netting a loss of $1.2 million, what has traditionally been the full funding formula, and no change in federal reimbursements in terms of revenue. Using $6.8 million of our reserves to maintain services and staffing, we remain consistent with what our five-year projections indicate. Still leaves us with a 90-day operating reserve projected for the end of the fiscal year, June 30, 2015. And so at this time, we are recommending the budget be put on display for public inspection for 30 days, at which time a public hearing on said budget will occur at the September 22nd Board Meeting. And final adoption will be recommended with any changes outlined for you between now and that time.
Questions? Any discussion? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? No further discussion. I just have a couple of comments. The transportation continues to founder for us, and that's a $6 million cumulative over the last four or five years, I guess it is. The rainy day fund is there for the purposes of balancing the budget, and I think you've done a good job of managing that, Gary, I really do. We will continue to strive to find funding wherever we can for the district. The good news in here is that we are back, at least we're in the, in the black for the last couple of years, coming on the general state aid from the state from where we were down. What was it? We were minus almost $3 million at one point per year, $2.5 million in '9, '10, '11, something like that. So that's a good thing. Pretty much my only comments on it, but thank you for the hard work that you put in there. I know it, it's been very difficult the last few years, so.
I would be remiss, I would be remiss to not acknowledge Joanne Bore. She, she puts a lot of time and effort as well into putting, putting a lot of the budget detail together on behalf of the district. And so it's certainly worth mentioning that she goes above and beyond as well. We work well as a team. It certainly requires a lot of input from, from a lot of different sources, different departments, and so forth. But we feel good about the budget. It is a deficit that is smaller than it has been, and we continue to go in that, in that direction for our projections. And so we certainly strive to have a balanced budget here in short order. If we can get some relief from the state in terms of just paying what the categorical formulas and the general state aid formulas would warrant at 100%, we would be very close. And so we certainly are hopeful. I think the November elections will, will have a lot to, to do with what financial, what the financial future of education and the state really looks like going forward, so.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes. Ms. Hawkes? Give me your sources.
Thank you, President Quigley. Action Report 13.1 this evening, Consolidated Action Report for Certified and Classified Personnel. We're seeking your approval on 119 items for certified personnel, 36 on classified personnel, four for administrative classified, and seven for administrative certified personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Vinegas?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
No.
Member Felice?
Yes.
Vice President Goojus?
Yes.
President Quigley?
Yes.
Within what the board just approved in the Consolidated Action Report, we did have some administrative appointments there. So I'd like to just recognize those people that are here this evening. The first one, I don't believe she's here. I think she had a prior engagement, Ms. Susan Sangwa. I don't think I'm missing her. She is the new Core Content Administrator for Literacy at Bolingbrook High School, and she comes to us from Hinsdale, District 86. So we want to welcome Susan. Next, we have Mr. Nick Detman. He's being recommended as the Assistant Principal for Student Services at Bolingbrook High School. He's currently, he was currently a dean at Bolingbrook High School. So welcome.
Stay standing up so people can see you. They get the camera on you. There you go.
The next one is Mr. Grant Galata, and he is the Student Services Administrator at Romeoville High School, and he was the SRT leader prior to that. So welcome, Grant. And our final appointment tonight was Mr. Prince Low, and he's being recommended as the Assistant Principal at John Lukansick Middle School. And he comes to us from Whitney Young Magnet High School, where he served last year as the Assistant Principal and Principal in Training. So welcome, Prince.
Next up, Superintendent's Information Reports. Oh.
Gary?
Sorry. That's me.
Sorry, Gary.
Okay, 14.1, Production Inserter Replacement. In 2006, the print shop had purchased a production inserter. The duty cycle was about 1 million cycles. To date, we've put over 1.5 million cycles on a, on a piece of equipment that was really projected to have a useful life of about eight years, which is right where we're at today. We produce or insert over 200,000 pieces of mail cycle through that inserter annually. And so at this time, they are requesting purchase of a new machine. We had two proposals put forward, put forth. You can see them there, Neopost and Pitney Bowes. And the recommendation is to take the lower of the two, which also has lower maintenance costs. This is just information. There's no action this evening, but just wanted to put this forward before you, before we actually seek approval in, at our next board meeting. And so we would look to purchase this via our technology lease. We feel it fits within the parameters of the technology lease. And the maintenance, annual maintenance would be paid via the print shop maintenance account that's budgeted annually. Any questions on that?
Are these two pieces of equipment comparable? I mean, are they pretty much, there's a $200 difference, but for $200 more, is that other one a Cadillac versus a Ford Escort?
I don't think so. I think they're very similar in terms of duty cycle and speed.
I have a question. Why is this under the information report instead of an action item?
I think we really just kind of dovetailed it with the next item, which is a rather large
Oh, okay.
item as well, coming out of the print shop. We just felt putting them both on information was
If we need it, we need it. That's, yeah, okay. So my question is, what is an inserter? It just folds and stuffs?
Exactly.
It is what it sounds like it is? Okay.
You know, I think in a lot of our other departments, I hear a lot about our, the use of best practice, whether it's food service, whether it's on the academic side. I'm curious as to how we ascertain if we are using best practices in the print shop. And one area I'm wondering is, have we ever consulted with private print shops and asked them to like, hey, this is how we do it. What do you guys think? And I wonder if that can be of some value to us. And I say that because, you know, we, you know, lots changed in printing and technology since eight years ago. You know, the amount of electronic things that we do are significantly bigger. So, and I just, I just wonder in, in our processes over there, have we ever had an outside eye look at what we do? You know, it's not binding, but it's just an outside eye that reviews what we do.
I know we haven't done anything formal in terms of bringing in a consultant to do an assessment. I do know that former Director Strodeman, as well as current Director Keith Locomiac, have done a lot of visits to outside printing operations, both school district as well as private enterprises, to kind of just see how we stack up, how, how they do things. They do attend a lot of trade shows to see what the best technology is, what the most cost-effective way is to do things. And so when they report back to me, they, they do indicate that we're very cost-effective, very efficient in how we manage things. But I don't have anything formal that I could produce that says, you know, we are operating at a, at a very efficient level. I do know that in looking at a school district close by, the, the budget that they put forward for their print shop operations is much larger than ours. And so I have questioned them over time to say, you know, is it, is it beneficial to maybe disband?
In regards to this inserter, I know we recently had a document that went out that was not ready for print. Well, maybe it was ready for print, but its formatting, and there were some issues wrong with that.
Are you familiar?
It was a letter from one of the principals to the schools, and the formatting was off. Is anybody aware?
All right.
So is this, was the inserter the problem there, or was the problem something else?
Again, I'm, I'm not familiar with the situation. Okay.
Quigley, Vice President Goojus? Jim Mitchum?
Speaking of the microphone. I can't hear you. There you go, thanks.
What happened in that situation was a letter came to us. We normally print these letters right, right over to a copier device, and we had, the copier device we used has a print driver on it that, when it was sold to us, they said ninety-nine point nine percent of everything that is printed to this copier, you won't have a problem with. Well, that point one percent was that letter that went through that day, and there were several words that were missing in two, two different areas, two different paragraphs within that letter. And because of that, we were in a very busy situation in the print shop. It was missed. The, the actual letter was stuffed and put into an envelope and sent out to the parents. We were notified about that, and we took, took action, and we printed out a brand-new letter, sent out another letter informing the parents of what had happened with the formatting problem. And what we did, as far as addressing this problem in the print shop, we went and purchased a new print driver for this machine to make sure, to ensure that point one percent of data that goes over there will be captured. I believe we're, we're in much better shape now because of that. We've also initiated some new procedures within the shop to put a couple pairs of eyes on letters that are going out to parents, and we feel that we're in a very safe situation now as far as that goes.
So previously, was there no set of eyes that was, nobody looked at the letters, or it was missed?
It was missed. These letters are always looked at by the operator that runs both the copier and the inserter machine. That's two different areas where, where that letter can possibly be, mistakes can be caught in that letter. In this situation, that, that did not happen. Like I said, a couple different words within two different paragraphs are, are somewhat easy to miss, and we didn't expect that to happen.
I mean, I saw it. It wasn't a couple of words, like, the paragraph just didn't even
Parts of, parts of two, two different sentences. Correct. All right, thank you.
Whose, whose job is it to proof the letter? Is it the print shop's job, or is it the author of the letter? Before it goes out?
The problem was not with the letter itself, it was just in the transferring of the data. So the letter as submitted had complete sentences and a complete paragraph, but in that transfer, some of the words were not picked up, so little pieces of data were missed. And so it appeared that some of the sentences just ended without being complete, and so the letter as it stood was originally fine.
Right, and I, and I get that, but, so before it goes out to our parents, should that have gone back to the author?
We, we usually direct mail from the print shop, many of our mailings, and that, that's where we have such a high efficiency, is, say, for our progress reports, for example, the file is submitted to print shop, and they print all of those, stuff all of those and mail all of those, because if those had to come back to the building, that would be quite labor-intensive for an individual at the building, each and every building to do that. So they often, more times than not, go directly out from print shop.
So this was just more of an anomaly, just something that doesn't typically happen?
Very much so. I've been with the district for over thirteen years. This is the first time something like this has ever happened.
And with the volume that they do produce, it is, although significant, because that was a missed piece of communication for that group of parents for that building, it was an isolated instance, as far as, as I'm aware.
Isolated, but very public-oriented.
Yeah, I think the, the issue is, obviously, parents don't blame the print shop. Parents were like, this principal doesn't know how to write a letter to us. And, you know, I felt terrible for the principal because I saw the social media outburst, you know, so I think, you know, we have to just be cognizant that they're the face of the school, and that principal looked bad, but it wasn't any of their fault, because it was direct mail from the print shop, so that was, that was unfortunate, and I appreciate how that principal handled it.
But thanks for putting in the, the steps now that would ensure that that doesn't happen again. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. It, it, all these letters will be okay by two different supervisors in the print shop before they go out, so I can assure you, this won't happen again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Academic Progress.
I've got one more, one more information report. Really has to do with the thirty copiers that are located in all of our buildings throughout the district. Back in two thousand and four, we purchased twenty-three new machines at a cost of four, over four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, purchased seven more over the last few, few years after that, and so they've been in service since two thousand and four. Since two thousand and twelve, parts have been unavailable for those Canon eighty-five per page per minute machines, and they've just been keeping them operating with salvage parts, parts they can find off eBay and so forth. Two of the machines have been considered beyond repair and basically were replaced with loaner refurbished units. And so, Rick, as you mentioned, also, the technology in these copiers is lagging behind. Data encryption, user authentication, and scanning features are all pretty well-dated. And so Print Shop had undertaken, and we've been putting this off, I think it's fair to say, for several years now, just in light of our financial situation. We're at the point now where we just cannot continue to operate these machines in a, in an efficient manner. They are well beyond their years, and so Print Shop did go out and look at several different options. We had five proposals that were submitted for a five-year lease with a dollar buyout at the end of the term, all included, including toner, parts, labor, and training would be included in that cost. We also would have thirty million impressions over the course of five years, and trying to determine what that cost would be on a five-year lease. And so the best option we came up with, replacing each machine, if you will, like-for-like, meaning thirty machines out, thirty machines in, is going to run us about a forty-five thousand dollar increase annually over five years. It's worth mentioning again that there's no maintenance costs included, were included in two thousand and four purchase, so we're just trying to benchmark what that four hundred thousand dollars cost was back in two thousand and four to what it, what it means today. At the end of the five years, the cost of ownership would be reduced by over four thousand dollars a month as the lease expires, and we would be paying just for the maintenance, also known as a click charge. And so there's some benefits there that are listed in terms of the, the recommend, recommended solution, going with Conica Minolta as our fleet partner going forward. And so we're looking to do, do this over the next several months, targeting Christmas break to be complete. We've got some power changes that are necessary. We feel we've got a good solution there where we'll keep the, the cost to a very, very small amount of infrastructure change out, and so at this time, it's just information.
Any discussion?
Gary, I appreciate the effort you guys did, especially under the additional benefits, looking at, I mean, even the small, no charge for staples, including some additional copies and the maintenance monthly cost. A lot of people take for granted a, a simple process like a copier-maintenance program, but I appreciate you guys doing the, the homework on this and looking at all the potential savings. That's, that's, it's a great job.
The old machines were eighty-five page per minute. I believe most of the new machines are sixty-five page per minute. I know that in the course of the last, I know, six years for sure, we have reduced the number of copies allotted. There was, we had a really, a lot, one year where we had a really large reduction, and I believe we went through a printer process where we tried to centralize printers and reduce, not just these main printers, but even printers that are in the classrooms and other areas. Is there potential to reduce even further due to all that reduction that we've done in, in the amount? So we went to sixty-five, is there, is there a way to go to a less, maybe as many options, but maybe it can't do sixty-five per minute, maybe it does fifty per minute in a lower cost?
A couple of comments. One, while we were trending in the right direction, meaning downward, in our copy counts district-wide, the last couple of years, we've started to trend up. I think it's tied a lot to the, the curriculum revisions that have been incorporated throughout the district, and so we went in with both eyes open, knowing that there might be some, some hiccup, if you will, some increase in our, in our copy costs. One of the things we would love to do is to reduce our reliance on printers. They're very inefficient in terms of the cost, and so unfortunately, we, we did a district-wide study to know where our printers are, and it's one of those things that have, it comes to the front and gets pushed to the back with all the various initiatives that, that we're dealing with in terms of technology and everything else. But we'd like to certainly get back on that, streamline our printers throughout the district, and push more of our copying to the copiers where it is more cost-effective. I think if you, if you scale down to a fifty-minute machine, it's a different architecture, different machine, the duty, duty rating might, might be something lower, might not be suited to, to what, what we're looking for. I think this is a mix, primarily the fifty, fifty-four copy a minute machines, sixty-five copy a minute machines, sorry, are, are the, are the bulk of the purchase, or the lease, rather. We've got a couple of smaller machines in there. Keith, I don't know if you want to speak to possibly stepping down the, the speed of the machines?
And a secondary question, do we have to, it was said that in this document that the older fleet used two-twenty, and we're going to one-ten, so are we going to have to change back the electrical to one-ten?
We had, we had a long discussion about that and what it was going to be required to do that. We came up with a solution where we feel we can buy battery backups that will allow us to step them down, give us the battery backup on the copier, and actually do it at a, at a cheaper cost than swapping out the two-to-twenty service to one-ten. And so everybody around the table was kind of a aha moment where we felt like this was a really good solution for us in terms of cost.
So buying the battery backup is cheaper than taking the two-twenty to one-ten?
Correct. Scaling down the machine speeds?
As far as scaling the, the machines down, you did note that we, we currently have eighty-two-hundred series machine, eighty-five minute, eighty-five a minute machines out in the district, we're scaling down to a sixty-five minute machine. Now, when we ran volumes out in the buildings for all the, all the different areas, we felt that sixty-five a minute was about the bare minimum, what we can sustain as far as stepping the machines down for a reduced cost. So we looked overall at the entire situation, as far as what did we need to replace, how many units? There's, in addition to these thirty units that are going to be replaced, there's another nine units out in the buildings that will not be replaced that were purchased more recently. We, we looked at several factors when we looked into these copiers, and it, the, the overwhelming factor was what was the duty cycle on these machines, and will, will they allow us to operate efficiently without the machines being down for service calls constantly? And we feel that the sixty, the sixty-five a minute machines were, were best suited for the district overall.
So what's the, the total cost?
Total cost, sixty-two-fifty per month for sixty months, with a dollar buyout at the end of the six months, sixty months.
Three hundred, three hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Pardon?
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand over the five-year lease.
Question, what kind of machine are we currently running on? Is it Minolta, or are we use other Canon?
Canon.
Canon equipment.
What, is it, so this doesn't include the battery backup?
No.
So how much is that estimated?
It, it could be anywhere from three-fifty to five hundred dollars. We're, we're still researching right now the, the best avenue to take as far as battery backup goes in stepping that power down.
But
We have a couple of people on it right now.
So is there a savings from going to this machine that uses one-ten versus what we're set up for, for two-twenty?
Yes, there is. If, if you get into that two-twenty volt range for machines, you're, you're looking at a more of a production class-type machine, eighty-five a minute or higher, so the costs go up dramatically with those.
That's it?
Thank you. Thanks, Keith.
Next, Academic Progress update.
Thank you, President Quigley.
She already snuck over there.
I'm here. We're ready to go. I'm pleased to present to you tonight an Academic Progress Update, Information Report fourteen point three. This is a brief overview of our academic progress for the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year. So on behalf of Dr. Mitchum, the Educational Services Directors and our building leadership, I'm pleased to share this information with you. Kelly Gilbert, the Director of Data and Assessment, will be assisting in providing some technical knowledge and answering any questions. And then Michael Lacasio, our Assessment Specialist, I also like to acknowledge for the, a level of skill and expertise that he and Kelly bring to the work that we do in the district through our data analysis. Tonight, we will be taking a look at our growth, and specifically looking at our MAP data, which stands for Measures of Academic Progress, as well as our state achievement data that is measured through ISAT and through our PSAE. Before we begin, and Kelly gives the community some reminders about some key terms in helping to understand the data, we have a great deal of information to share with you, so we'll try to be as efficient as possible, but we're happy to answer any additional questions or provide additional information. As a preview, however, what this data tells us is that we are continuing to trend in the right direction. Our students are continuing to exceed the national average for growth. Our students are continuing to move closer and closer to meeting the college and career readiness benchmarks, and our students are outperforming their projected growth. And so we're going to talk a little bit about what that looks like across the district, but what this means to us, it's, it's very positive because it's a clear indication of strong instructional practices and support systems. It's also a clear indication of the positive impact that our teachers, support staff, and leaders are having on our students. And at the same time, it presents great opportunities for continued growth and improvement. So as we move through the slides, we always have a lens in looking at our data as recognizing the growth and the positive, but also looking at areas where we can improve. We'll have some, uh, support in answering questions and providing information from our executive directors as well throughout the night. And I'll allow Kelly to just give us a brief overview on the information that we're going to be looking at.
Thank you, and good evening. As Mrs. Kinder said, you'll be experiencing our assessment overview this evening of our five standardized assessments, which include MAP, CPAA, ACCESS, ISAT, and PASE, and I'll explain each of those here in just a moment. MAP is our Measures of Academic Progress. We have been utilizing this since the two thousand and eleven, twelve school year. Students are assessed in both reading and math on this particular assessment. It's computerized and adaptive. It helps us inform our instructional practices and our programming here in the district, allows us to gain valuable insights into the student's college and career readiness aptitude, and allows us to view grade-independent academic growth. The CPAA is our Children's Progress Academic Assessment, which is administered to our bilingual K-two students since the two thousand and twelve school year, again assessing our students in both reading and math. We will also have information regarding our ACCESS Assessment, which represents our state assessment, assessing comprehension and communication in English, state to state. It is given to all of our English language learners in grades kindergarten through twelve, measuring listening, speaking, reading, writing, and literacy. Additionally, we're going to conclude our presentation this evening with information regarding our ISAT Assessment. ISAT is the Illinois State Achievement Test, given in grades three through eight. This year was the first year the assessment was aligned a hundred percent to Common Core. Previously, only twenty percent of the questions were aligned to Common Core. I note that is an important piece that we're going to come back to, and we'll come back to that data component. And finally, we will have information on our Prairie State Achievement Test, our PSAE, which is administered at grade eleven, which includes the ACT plus work keys and a science Some important terms to note as we go through the presentation, including some definitions regarding achievement and growth. You heard Mrs. Kinder mention both of those areas, and we're looking again at how our students are achieving. How are they meeting and attaining those designated regarding our ISAT assessment. ISAT is the Illinois State Achievement Test, given in grades three through eight. This year was the first year the assessment was aligned a hundred percent to Common Core. Previously, only twenty percent of the questions were aligned to Common Core. I note that is an important piece that we're going to come back to, and we'll come back to that data component. And finally, we will have information on our Prairie State Achievement Test, our PSAE, which is administered at grade eleven, which includes the ACT plus work keys and a science assessment. Some important terms to note as we go through the presentation, including some definitions regarding achievement and growth. You heard Mrs. Kinder mention both of those areas, and we're looking again at how our students are achieving. How are they meeting and attaining those designated levels of performance, specifically how they are meeting or exceeding standards? We're looking at growth, both in between a school year and within a school year for our students. You'll hear a few times RIT score. RIT stands for Wash Unit. It is the unit of measure from the Measures of Academic Progress Assessment, the MAP assessment. You'll hear references to typical growth, which is a standard measure of grope, growth on the MAP assessment, and it is growth seen by fifty percent of the students across the country at each fall RIT score in each grade. Additionally, you'll hear information regarding college and career readiness. Our district benchmark is measured at the sixty-fifth percentile, and you will hear that this information is an indicator for us to allow us to know if our students are on track to being considered college and career-ready. At this time, I'd like Mrs. Kinder to walk us through our academic progress of our data. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. So if you take a look at this first graph that is provided in the presentation, you will note an overview of grades kindergarten through eighth grade, and we'll go into a little bit more detailed comparison as we move forward. But what we are looking at here is typical growth in reading and math. Reading is represented by the red bar, and math is represented by the blue bar. And so as you can see, in all cases across the board, that Valley View students in grades K through eight are exceeding the national average. That black bar that's drawn across the graph at the fiftieth percentile mark is, indicates the national average, and our students are exceeding that across the board. One area that I, I do want to make note of, because it, it does seem like a significant difference, is the comparison of our kindergarten students to the bars showing our first-grade students. And it should be noted that when we compare our students to kindergarteners nationally, some of those students, actually, a great deal of those students are half-day students. And so because we have the, the benefit and the support to have a full-day kindergarten program, our students appear to be at a much higher level, exceeding that national average, and justifiably so, because they are receiving so much more quality instruction. So that, that does not signify a drop-off to first grade. What it signifies in first grade is that we're now being compared to students who are all having a full day of instruction as first graders. This graph provides for us typical growth breakdown in reading and math by K-eight by subgroups. Again, you see the black national average bar that's indicated at the fiftieth percentile. And once again, for the second year in a row, all of our groups are higher than the national average. What we're looking at here is an average reading growth for twenty fourteen, and we're looking at fall to spring. So how much did our students grow in one year? The line that you see moving horizontally across the graph indicates the national typical growth. This is the measure of what we would typically see the students grow at that grade level as they progress through the system. What we see here is that in all cases, our students are exceeding that national typical growth trend. And what this indicates is that strong instructional practices and systems of support are in place, because our students are, are outperforming what we would typically see for a year's worth of instruction. And as I noted, this is the second year in a row. We see like trends in math as we look from fall to spring, whereas we are exceeding that national, national typical growth. Now, when we look at this, there is, there's much to celebrate, but there's also many more questions to be asked. When we see that gap shrink in some cases, at fourth grade, for example, that indicates to us that we need to take a closer look, and, and we most certainly have done that in digging into that data further.
Is, is that the RIT growth across all the different bands is, can you, can you dive into that a little more?
Into this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is projected versus actual RIT growth, fall to spring. So our students, this is the, the difference between the two? Is that what we're looking at? Okay. The difference between the two of what we, they were projected to grow and what they actually grew. And so as you see, it kind of shrinks as, as you go up in the grades, however, there's still, there's still a difference.
So is there, is there a graph that shows what percentage of our students made their RIT growth?
What percentage of our students made their RIT growth? We have a graph that shows what for students, is it? The opening? Yeah, okay. Sorry, they live and breathe this. This, this shows you here what percentage of students are meeting typical growth.
So that means that, I'll make sure I get this right, in kindergarten?
Mm-hmm.
Seventy-six percent of our students met their reading growth?
Correct.
Or is that like, on average? Some kids, that is seventy-six percent made their target?
That is seventy-six percent of students made their target.
Thank you.
So, just to make sure that I'm looking at that, you know, the original, the one that you were, the projected versus actual RIT growth for math? So just looking at kindergarten, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm looking at this right. The, we were projected to an average RIT growth of fifteen, but we grew twenty point seven in kindergarten?
That is correct.
So we were five point seven over what we anticipated?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
No, please, ask any questions that you have, as, so as to simplify this, it is a lot to take in, and it's always even a, a learning curve for us, and we are familiar with this information. So that was math that we just compared, projected versus actual, meaning our students are outperforming what they are projected to perform based on what we see nationally.
Can, I'm sorry, can you go back one more time?
Sure.
Speaking of our first graders, because these are, are kids that were the first ones that have all-day kindergarten, correct? So talk about them in particular, and do we maintain those gains? Are we growing those gains? Did they recede?
Sure. I, I think the best measure, I may have passed it. It's this one. Okay. The, the best way to look at this is the, looking at the college and career readiness benchmark. And as you see, we're, we're closing the gap on getting closer and closer to that benchmark. And so if you look at our first-grade students, and I'll show you, here, here's math, for example. These students had the benefit of full-day kindergarten. They are our first cohort of students to surpass that benchmark that is set at the sixty-fifth percentile in, in our district. And so if I can look a little bit closer here. One eighty, let's see, one eighty-one point three, one eighty-four point one, where the benchmark's at one eighty-four. So granted, it's, it's right there, however, what we're seeing is that they, they are at that mark, and now our job is to ensure that they stay there and exceed, you know, moving forward progressively. And so we see this, this like trend in reading as well. And then math, once again, we see as we, as we move up the grade levels, we're, we're getting closer and closer to closing that gap to meeting that benchmark. And basically, that benchmark means that at, at that given point in time, students need to be at a certain place in order to likely reach their intended target of being college and career-ready when they leave us. And so when we see that students are not hitting that benchmark, it is then our, our chance to be responsive and intervene and provide them with instruction and support that helps close some of those gaps before it gets to be the endgame and, and they're seniors in high school.
Well, one of the things we saw with the all-day kindergarten was those students, you know, significantly outperformed the prior kindergarten class, the, the half-day. And so we wanted to make sure we maintain those gains to the first grade. We talked a lot about first grade is going to see, you know, our first-grade group is going to see better-prepared students than they ever saw before. So obviously, second grade is going to see that process too. Are we continuing to be aware of that, that these students are going to come in? But I heard teachers say these students, first-grade teachers say these students were better-prepared than, you know, any students they had gotten before. Are we continuing to make sure that the next level is ready?
Yes, absolutely. So our, our teachers are well-aware, they are, but systematically, it is important for us to give guidance. The team actually today finalized a set of guidelines or standards, just notification, basically, in terms of kind of what to expect and, and what we expect for that second-grade class moving forward, because now we are continuing to move with the students as, as they move through. So that will be communicated to the leaders of the buildings and to the teachers, and we will have an eye on that throughout the year as well. Another measure that we look at in the district is looking at cohort trends. That means a, a group of students as they progress from year to year to year. And so what we're, we're looking at here is a three-year cohort trend in the area of reading, and this is on students who meet or exceed the sixty-fifth percentile, which is where we have set our college and career readiness benchmark. In reading, all cohorts have a higher percentage of students at or above college and career readiness in the spring of twenty fourteen than when we compared to the spring of twenty twelve. So again, this is a positive trend, that more and more students are, are meeting that benchmark as they progress. In mathematics, we, we see some areas of inconsistency and other areas where it is, it is more steady. An area that we definitely have our eye on is the fifth, sixth-grade transition, and so that's an area that we have looked into a great deal, and we are continuing to ensure that we tighten that as much as possible. We also have a different test that the students switch to at that time, so they take the, the two-five test in grades two through five, and then they take the six-plus test after that. So again, those are areas that we are continuing to monitor and target and investigate further. I'd like to invite Erica Ekstrom to speak briefly on the data from the Student Services Department. What you're looking at here is broken down by programs for all of our students who have IEPs.
This first slide looks at our Student Services data across a three-year trend. All of our, some celebrations that we saw in this data is overall, our students with disabilities did increase throughout the three years, as well as our students in our largest programs, our students who are supported in our speech and language-only program, as well as our supported education program, which is now commonly referred to as our co-taught sections. All of those programs saw significant increases. What's not seen in this data is the number of students that have shifted. So our students being supported in the general education setting compared to two thousand twelve has increased over ninety-four percent. We've also seen a dramatic decrease in our students being supported in self-contained programs. So our cross-categorical program, while some students will always need that support, those fifty-four percent of that program shifted to support in a general education environment. And just in the past year, our students being supported in therapeutic settings decreased from a hundred and seventy students to a hundred and twenty-nine students. So we are, through the diligent efforts of our teachers and our school administrators and collaboration with all departments, are making sure that we are exhausting all supports so that our students are college and career-ready and supported with our rigorous core curriculum. Some areas where we're going to take some next steps and take a look at, we do have a committee of stakeholders looking at our cross-categorical program data. The students supported in that program have changed significantly. Previously, some of those students had a mix of mild to moderate needs. Now, the student profile in that program is students with moderate to intense disabilities. So we have teachers and other stakeholders really looking at how we can best support those students and develop a comprehensive framework for that program. With our math data, celebrations that we saw is all programs across the board did see dramatic increases in our math, and these are students who met typical growth compared to the same standards as all of their other peers. This really is the hard work of our teachers and in collaboration with our curriculum directors and building administrators and teachers to really ensure that we are providing a variety of math interventions and supports to our students. This is an area that we will continue to build off of by building off of the professional development that has been provided over the past year.
Is there any questions for Erica? Okay, next, I'd like to invite Ricardo Sanchez Lopez to come up and share with us some data regarding our bilingual students.
Thank you, Rachel, members of the board, leadership community. This first slide, it represents the growth that we have had in reading and mathematics amongst the ELL population in the bilingual kindergarten, first grade, and second grade program. Just as we have had progress in the general education population as well as special education population, similar growth has been taking place in this bilingual program, K two. We hold ourselves equally accountable and to the same high expectations than all the other programs in the district. And so as a result of the hard work from teachers and changes to curriculum and support that we have provided to teachers in instruction, we have, we have experienced some significant growth in reading and also mathematics in those number of classrooms that we have, which are not few, are quite, quite a bit in the five elementary schools that have bilingual education. So CPAA, as was mentioned before, replaces MAP for the students who are being instructed in Spanish in bilingual K two, who eventually take MAP once they go into bilingual third grade. This one is a MAP. As I mentioned, the students who transition out of bilingual self-contained and go into the general education program, or who continue in bilingual third, fourth, all the way to eighth grade, they do not take assessments for literacy in Spanish anymore. Instead, they take MAP, just like everybody else. And as you can see in that graph, we have had some significant growth as well in the past three years. Last year was, again, very, very good growth, thanks to the changes that we put in place in curriculum and instruction and professional development.
I see some great growth in reading. I mean, going from sixty-one percent to seventy-two percent. So you've had some success there. Can you talk a little bit about what's happening with math?
Yeah, in math, we have gone through some, we have gone through some changes as, as the rest of the district. We teach the same curriculum than the general education program. The only thing is that the materials, instructional materials are in Spanish for K two and for, for MAP.
They are there or not?
They are exactly the same instructional materials. The only limitation that we have had is that when it comes to interventions for mathematics, the number of materials that are available by publishers in native language are very, very limited. And so we have been working very closely with Adam, identifying those instructional supports for those students who need them. So again, these are students who continue to be in ELLs, and, and they continue to be tracked as part of the bilingual program. Those are students who have not transitioned out of the LEP subgroup. For those who have transitioned out of the LEP and have become proficient in English, those percentages of performance in mathematics are, are higher, and they're included in the data that was presented as part of general education.
So just to maybe take Vice President Goojus, I'm seeing a trend in reading going in the right direction, but three years, I'm seeing a trend going in the wrong direction for math. One year, anything can be explained out, but now we're seeing, you know, it's the second year in a row where we're seeing a decrease. So maybe answered it, maybe I just didn't, but what are we doing to snap that streak to go backward, go back up?
Good evening, I'm Adam Herter. I'm the pre-K through five Director of Math and Science Curriculum. Good evening, everyone. Similar to Ricardo's point, we supplement our core curriculum with a variety of additional external resources, many of which at no, virtually none to no cost. Those resources, we've diligently approached with the ultimate goal of having everything available in English and Spanish, whereas unlike in literacy and math, that isn't always possible. So one of the things we do in-house is translate a significant amount of those materials into Spanish so they can be used in our ELL classrooms. But based on this data, and I agree, that's certainly an area we need to look at, and as we cycle through our current curriculum and start, and look toward the future for other additional resources, and then in a few years, a core resource, that is something that we're definitely going to have to address to make sure it's a program that has embedded supports for ELL students too.
I'd also like to add that at the elementary level, we are standardizing the number of minutes that students receive mathematics instruction, and we've increased that to eighty minutes for this school year. So there'll be an increase in time spent in that specific area, which will benefit not only our ELL students, but all of our students, and it's, it's a, it's a much-needed change.
Thank you. I was hoping you were saying. I guess why it stands out to me, something I was told once before was that when teaching students to speak another language, the math is more of a universal language than reading, and that typically, we would see higher results in math. in math. So we see reading surpassed it. And at one point, that was very much true in our district.
I would say that traditionally that has been a true statement. However, the, the math expectations that are now in place as a result of the Common Core state standards, it's no longer just numbers. Numbers between English and Spanish anyway are universal language. And when you add a great level of reading and literacy infused into that, it can present a challenge, thus the need for the native language support for certain students. And so that is, that is a true statement to some regard. However, literacy is in a higher demand in math than it's ever been.
Can I make one point? I think the key to all of this data is that we're able to pinpoint and focus those areas of improvement that are required and put those interventions in place. So we clearly don't have our head in the sand when we're looking at our trend data. But as we look at our trend data, you know, we will, we will focus, laser-like focus on those areas in which we see the trend not going in the direction that we expect, fully anticipating that when we set our goals for next year, that those trends will reverse.
This slide is about access. This one is the assessment that all ELL students take once per year, and it measures to what degree students have made growth in acquiring oral comprehension, oral expression, reading, writing, and a total also called overall. So this is assessment that the state uses, and not only the state of Illinois, but across the country, many states use to make a determination as to what degree students have developed that minimum required proficiency to be considered not limited in English anymore and continue their education in the general education program. And you have seen in blue, 2011, 12, in red, 2012, 13, and in green, the last set of data available, which is the data coming from the assessment that the students took in January of this year. So we have seen some, again, sustainable growth in, in each one of those four domains, as well as in the overall domain, which translates in a greater number of students reaching that minimum proficiency and then being able to leave the self-contained environment and continue their education successfully outside of the ELL program on a full-time basis and also in a part-time basis as we decrease the degree of support that we provide them so they can start transitioning to the general education.
You know, I think this is the most important graph for your group in the sense that our job in teaching children that speak one language to be able to speak English is key because our society is still set up that you give, you have the greatest chance of success if you speak English. You have a greater chance of success probably if you speak two languages, but you definitely have a greater chance of success if you speak English. So I think that this is telling, and you've always been ahead of the curve on this. So, and that's important, that we're able to bring kids in that maybe English isn't spoken in the home, and teach them English, and they're able to, you know, operate in both worlds, but matriculate to the generated process. I think that's, it's a really key benefit for those kids, you know, so thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I do have to say that even though at district level, we have put in place many changes in curriculum, and we have truly, I can say truly, taken our curriculum for ESL to an environment that is aligned to Common Core and to the rigor that comes from Common Core at each one of the grade levels, all the way from elementary, kindergarten, all the way to high school. And we have supported teachers through coaching and visits to classrooms, and we have been working very, very hard, not only myself, but Yadi Alfaro, our assistant director, and also Mariel Salivar. I do have to say that teachers have worked very, very, very hard as well in the past few years, and this last year specifically, they, they stepped it up, and we can see some, some significant growth as a result of it. And it's not the end of the process. We will continue working on improving our curriculum and instruction over the years to come. This last, thank you for your comments, Vice President Goojus. Yeah, I couldn't agree more with what you're saying about importance of proficiency in English and also a second language. This last graph represents the number of students who are in, in the ELL group in our district. I presented a similar graph last year and the year before then, and it's basically, in a very graphic way, shows you where the bulk of our students are in terms of kind of being limited in their English proficiency. Many of them are speakers, speakers of Spanish, but even that has started to change in the past few years as immigration from Latin America has significantly decreased, even though there has a spike in the past few weeks, not here in the region or in Illinois, but more kind of in the border. But other languages have increased representation in our district. A few years ago, our hundred report, it was close to 40 different languages, and now that, that has approached almost 50 different languages represented in the district. And the bulk of those students who are not only speakers of that other language, but in the process of developing English proficiency, they are in the kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade. You can see how the graph shows that by starting in fourth grade and then continuing to middle school and high school, we have a significant decrease, not because the students drop out or because we just have fewer students, it is because all those students in kindergarten, first grade, second, they have developed that English proficiency and they have moved on into the general location program. So I, I am very proud of the work that not only as a department we do, but also the collaboration that I get from all the other departments, because we don't teach in isolation, it's a, it's a team effort. And our students grow not only through our teachers in the program, but teachers from all the different schools and all the different grades and all the different programs. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, that's a telling graph right there. I mean, it's hard to see the numbers, but it looks like the drop goes from a high of 426 down to 143 students at fourth grade. That's amazing.
Yes, it's, it's significant, and that's a direct result of the, the work that the teachers are doing to develop that English proficiency as well as keep the academic growth going as well. As I noted earlier, when, in, when we opened, there are definitely some positive trends. We are seeing that our students in K8 are exceeding the national average for typical growth in both reading and math. In nearly all grade levels, they've improved on the previous year's gains. And for a second year in a row, all groups are higher than the national average, and most groups also met or surpassed the previous rates from 2013 in reading and math. We are also seeing that the reading and math actual growth for our students in Valley View has outperformed their projected growth in grades K through R. Now, we do have some areas where we saw more of a steady trend or in some cases, a decline, and those are areas that are noted there, but we are definitely much, with much focus looking into those areas. With the exception of one grade, and this is, is very insignificant because it's actually about .4, .6, all the other grades have made progress over the last three years towards reaching the CCR cut score, College and Career Readiness Cut Score in Reading. And kindergarten and first grade are the only grades to reach this benchmark at this time. And actually, I, I highlighted the example of our first grade actually tipping over that point of meeting that benchmark and going above. So that's a trend that we absolutely have to continue.
May I make one more comment?
Yes.
This is in line with, with what we had communicated previously with our all-day kindergarten. The expectation is that we ensure that those kids are at or above that college readiness benchmark, which over the, over the two years has proven to hold true, while at the same time, we're trying to create a safety net for those kids who were not exposed to this rigorous curriculum, as well as all-day kindergarten, to ensure that we, we close that gap with those kids as well. But ultimately, we'd like to see as the years progress, we capture another grade level and another grade level, another grade level, until such time that our district is at a, at a point where all of our kids are at that college and career readiness benchmark, while at the same time, reducing the number of interventions required to sustain and support that.
Now, very clearly, you have met the, the objective. The kindergarten kids, in kindergarten, all-day, first all-day group made it to the 65th percentile. Now in first grade, they've done the same. The minimum expectation would be in third grade. We'd see the same, so next year, we'd see three grades at that level, while continuing to make some catch-up efforts in the other grades. But over time, using that all, that first all-day kindergarten as a benchmark, within five years, we should see that across elementary.
Definitely.
Yeah, and I, and I think it's a true testament to the efforts of, of everyone in the district, because this has been a extreme time of change and increase in expectations. And despite all of this change, despite of, all of the bumps and stresses that come along with change, we're still seeing these results. And so now that we have these foundational pieces in place, our understanding is growing, we are learning as educators even more, and so that's a trend that can only strengthen as we move forward. That being said, though, I'm just sharing with you some, and we've looked at this so deeply, but some areas for continued focus. I mentioned previously with elementary, the instructional day, and we will have an increased focus on the core curriculum and utilizing curricular resources in alignment with an increased block time of 80 minutes daily for mathematics and 170 minutes daily for literacy. We're including more rigorous tasks in the curriculum map that embed technology that are performance-based, and this also helps prepare for our transition to the PARC assessment as well, and that require more in-depth reasoning of grade level concepts. We're increasing reading strategy and literacy professional development for all staff, including collaboration with literacy leaders. We have a grade-two math screener implementation and professional development on the horizon, and we also have our K1 screener in place, so that is proving to be very beneficial in targeting specific areas that students need support. And we're embedding pre- and post-assessments for grades one through five to assist us with flexible grouping and targeting those areas of need. So getting very specific and purposeful, even more so than we've already been, in meeting our students' needs. At the middle and high school, a very same theme, however, just to highlight a few, we're going to focus on a tighter linkage between the identified power standards and the use of district common assessment data, so that we're having the regular checks on, on how our students are progressing. The creation of a database of resources for enhancement teachers that's connected to Common Core power standards for English Language Arts. And we are integrating a more rigorous Common Core state standards-aligned resource for our mathematics courses. And we are also using additional resources to better support our mathematics interventions at the, the middle school and high school level. So that is a summary of MAP data when we look at student growth. And MAP, for us, has been a, a steady measure. As you are aware, the state assessment system is changing, it has changed, and it's changing once again. And so it's, it's a moving target in many terms, and we aren't always quite sure what to expect. That being said, this is the measure that the public sees, that the state tracks in terms of determining a school's progress. So it's important that we understand and we look at this achievement measure that's more of a summative, end-of-the-road measure as well. I have mentioned that the state of Illinois has made changes to the assessment over the last three years. We began with looking at the Illinois Learning Standards in 2011, and then starting to make that transition to having a Common Core state standards-aligned assessment. And so even in 2013, 14, when we're told that 100 percent of the test items were aligned to Common Core, that's still an area that we're, we're looking at very closely, as yet we're preparing for another change with the PARC assessment. The trends that we're seeing for ISAT in grades three through eight, again, reading is the red bar that you'll see indicated, and math is the blue bar. And so for math, while from 2012 to 2013, we had a slight decline, we did rebound in 2014. Now, that is a significant gain from 51 percent to 59 percent. However, what we don't have right now to put this in context for you is the state averages. So we don't yet know, was that a trend seen across the state? Or was there a trend that held steady or a slight increase or a slight decrease? But at any rate, it is an increase, and it, it does signify growth in that area. In reading, from 2012 to 2013, we saw a slight increase and then a somewhat, not quite significant decrease, where it kind of stayed the same. Again, we don't yet know what that looks like at the state level. Was that a result of this, the assessment changing, and that's the trend that other schools saw? Or was that an issue specific to Valley View? And so we will soon have that information.
That, that typically is when, September, October?
I believe so.
I mean, normally, normally we see Chicago's data, but Chicago just released their MAP scores. They didn't release the ISAT data. People have read into that, but I mean, we'll see.
Yeah, it, it's really hard, because you're not really sure what it's telling you, because it's changing from year to year, so it's not a steady measure. And, you know, we'll be here again at this time next year, talking about the PARC assessment, and we'll have some limited data, and it won't be talking to this data. We'll basically be comparing two different things, although we will do our best to make the correlation, and then also use our other internal measures to provide you with a progress update, so that we're ensuring that we are keeping our eye on the prize and we are moving forward and being very specific and targeted with our, our decision-making, even during this time of great transition. If we compare the, the three-year trends for our elementary and middle schools, the, the graph on the left is looking at reading. The, the lightest color shade is 2012, then 2013, followed by 2014. And then we see overall, if you look at the three-year trend, pretty much holding steady, although we had an increase and then a decrease. At math, at, I'm sorry, reading at middle school, we do see a continuing increase over that three-year comparison. In math, we do see more of a steady trend, and if you look at the three-year growth, so from 2012 to 2014 in math, in our elementary schools, we see a five-point gain, and at middle schools, we see a 10-point gain.
Looking at this data, there was a time a couple of years ago where we were, there was a lot of concern about the middle schools. And when this, the start of this administration, there was, there was a lot of concern about the middle schools. Looking at this data and I, looking at the individual school data, I think that the middle schools deserve some recognition that, as I looked at the data, it said that all the middle schools had made progress over, over three years, with a couple really standing out. I, I think like Humphrey really stood out. Congratulations, Principal Lavery and your team. And John J. Lucanzek, really, I, I think about Lucanzek often, because at one point, I can remember them being like, on this measure, rated the lowest, and now they're one of the leaders in the middle school. And I believe Principal Rollerson, you've been there over these past three years, and congratulations to you on that as well. So I, I think there's some outstanding results in middle school and some consistent efforts. So thank you, Ms. Flores, and Ms. Vay, and Ms. Selector, wherever, oh, there you are, for your work in that. I think elementary concerns me a little more, because there's been some schools that have made gains. Jamie McGee, Hermanson, and then there's been some schools that have struggled over the three-year trends. Irene King, RC Hill. You know, so those, you know, I, from looking at the three-year data, it would say that we have figured something out in middle school. But looking at the three-year data still says that our results at elementary are sporadic.
Well, what I would, I would echo your comments about middle school. And what I would also like to call attention to is that middle school, they've been attacking the, the problem a, a little bit, for a little bit longer. With Ms. Vay having been in the position one year prior to Dr. Mitchum's leadership, she had a chance to lay some, some groundwork to, to prepare for those changes, and so they have been, they're a little bit ahead in terms of working through this process of change, and now the results are really starting to take hold. With elementary schools, where we're seeing the inconsistency was with mathematics, as you know, we had quite a few changes over the last three years, from the first year to moving to further implementation of the Common Core, to even more so this year. But where the changes are taking hold is where we have focused our greatest efforts on the primary levels with our foundational math groups and the implementation of math screeners. And so you will see similar results. The inconsistency between schools does concern me as well. And again, that's something that we're looking at when we look at where our students were falling based on the previous cut scores, where they fall based on the current cut scores, which can have a, a big sway and have an influence in what those percentages look like. So that's why we pair this with other data sets to ensure that we are not off-base and that we are targeting areas of concern at those grade levels. And I can assure you that our building leaders and our teachers dig into this data with great intensity with asking those same exact questions.
I hear all that, but I guess despite that, Jamie McGee, Hermanson, despite the change in the test, they made it happen. Three years in a row, they had growth, despite the tests getting more rigorous. So it can be done.
It can be done.
So, yeah, the tests got harder, I got that, but, you know, we got two schools in our district, despite that, they, they had increases year over year over year.
I agree. I agree, and that's certainly conversations that we have had. If you look at Hermanson, for example, and their three-year trend, from 2012 to 2014, there's a 10-point gain, and Jamie McGee, a seven-point gain over the three-year trend. And so we And so we certainly look at that. But if you look at another school, for example, like Scoff Elementary, where from 2012 to 2013, you do see a significant drop, those students all rebounded, because there was a good chunk of students that fell just below a cut score. And so what that told Principal Noon and her staff was, okay, this is an issue. We've identified this. Let's jump in and target this area. And that's exactly what they did. And you can see that that had an impact on those students. And so it's just this leveling-out period, and there's different reasons in different areas, from instructional and professional development into what's working well with teams and what's not. And those are the conversations that we'd be happy to, you know, bring you in on or enlighten you more further, but they definitely are occurring. And math specifically, under Adams' guidance, he is taking that approach, where he's being very in-depth in looking at the data.
I mean, there's several of our schools that have kind of, you know, bounced back. You brought up Scoff, and they had a tough year last year, I think, in math, and they bounced back. And I'm confident that they'll do that again this year with reading. But, you know, I'm going to belabor this a little bit. I think that when we have two of our 12 schools able to do this consistently, that we've got to pinpoint what's happening there. And then we have other schools that, when you look at the graph, their decline is in a general downward path. And we've got to figure out what is happening here that's not happening there. And to that end, I think, you know, we're going to dig all in this data, but these are the general trends that are pretty obvious. And I think to that end is, you know, we've got some principals, Principal Valenza, Principal Mitchum, that are out here, they're making it happen, you know? And I think that we have got to figure out what they're doing, best practices, and repeat that process, like what's happening at the middle schools. I believe, when I look back, and I cannot remember which middle school it was, it might have been Jane Addams, that was showing positive growth, and over time. And I think it was, because I think I remember speaking to Principal Killingsworth about it. And then we've seen that some of those practices, things that were happening in mathematics at Jane Addams, were copied and developed. And that's what, you know, I think we all want to see as a consistent effort, not a shot in the dark, or we're going to be up this year, or down this year. And I think it's important to recognize the schools that are making that happen. You know, politics plays in all of this, in this sense, that we talk about PARC, and I don't know what's going to happen with PARC. At one minute, it was like 42 states were on board with PARC, politicians got involved, and who knows what's happening with PARC right now? Who knows what the assessment will be that colleges use to assess kids? Will it be PARC? Will it be the ACT? I felt good at one point when 42 schools were on board, 42 states were on board, and now I know it seems like every week, another state drops out. With local issues, I think that often our principals that are doing well are not recognized for doing well, and I think that, you know, when we have struggles, we are not, you know, addressing those necessarily head-on. So I think that it's, I can't reiterate enough how much I appreciate the middle school principals and the work they've done. And that same would go for Jamie McGee, and Mr. Principal Valenza, and Principal Mitchum. And Principal Mitchum, to you in particular, you are often overshadowed by your husband and not fairly given the credit that you deserve. So let this be clear, that you are worth your salt, and that your numbers individually, though not to you, Superintendent Mitchum, help shine his. So appreciate your work, and I appreciate the grief that you take, you know? And I know you do it for the kids.
Done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Okay, so looking at our trends by building for middle school. As you noted, Member Goojus, we have seen an upward trend in almost all of our middle schools, and just a significant decline in one, in the area of reading, and that's the red graph on your left. And in some cases, upwards of eight points over a three-year trend. And the mathematics, where we see it taking hold for sure, is that at the lowest, eight-point gains over three years, and at the highest, 16-point gains over three years. And so those are definitely very intentional and purposeful efforts that are showing themselves in this as a byproduct. When we look at PSAE, the Prairie State Achievement Exam for our high schools, which is the ACT in the work case, just a district view of our three-year trend for high school. And so the first set of columns on your left is PSAE in 2012. Reading is red, math is blue. In the middle, you see 2013. Reading is red, and math is blue. And then you see 2014. And so there has been an increase, and this is district-wide, so both high schools, and then a staying-steady from 13 to 14. And then mathematics, we are kind of hanging around that same point from 12 to 13 with an increase in 2014. When we look at the high schools broken down, let's see, reading is on the left, and math is on the right. And so if we look at those trends, at Bolingbrook High School, over three years, we do see a six-point gain over the three years. And at Romeoville High School, we see an eight-point gain over three years of that trend that we are seeing for reading. In the area of mathematics, Bolingbrook High School has stayed steady with a slight decline from 45 to 44%. And at Romeoville High School, over three years, we see a three-point gain, and from 2012 to 2013, we see a six-point gain. So just a comment to insert here regarding the future of this for our students. It is certainly a year of transition. We know that institutes of higher education recognize the ACT. We know that it would be a disservice to our students to not have that opportunity to take the ACT. And we know that PARC is not yet fully or at all recognized by institutes of higher ed. Despite promises that it soon will be, we can't bank on that for these students who are caught in the middle. And so for this time of transition, we are making adjustments so that our students do have that opportunity to take the ACT, and then looking at all other areas of our assessment schedule, so that we can cut down as much as possible, because we're definitely in assessment overload, but we have competing priorities in terms of requirements to graduate through the state, and acknowledging what the colleges want to see in terms of an ACT score. So we are working through this as best as we possibly can, and we're in the same boat like every other district in the state. It's a constant conversation between my counterparts and other districts, and I know it is so at the superintendent level, and the director level, and principal level as well.
I was remiss, Principal Kinder, I left you out, but you have had tremendous growth in the three years, these past three years. So congratulations, Ms. Smith, to you too, and your team over there, and particularly, I think it's exciting to see in math. I know that's been a particular focus, Ms. Vey, and that you guys have, you know, shown improved there. Your three-year gains in reading are significant. I mean, there's no way around that. They're significant. And that's great, and also your trends in math. So great job to you. I know you got up here and said that's what was going to happen, and that's what's happening.
Thank you. So as I mentioned previously, we are faced with the changing state-level assessment system. We do see some positive trends, and as you noted, and as we are very well aware, identified areas for growth. And we also have a continued focus on growth and improvement, and we're focusing on using multiple measures and multiple sources of data to drive our decision-making, so that we can make it through this time of transition, and then have a time where we can just be stable in terms of the data and what it means. And so we are trying to make sense of it, and we will try to make sense of it to help our community, board included, to understand these changes and ensure that we are continuing the movement in the positive direction. As we make this transition to the PARC assessment, we have provided some information briefly to the board and community previously. We are going to continue to do so as the school year continues. We've provided information to our staff, and we're working with our staff more in-depth in terms of what implications this has on our instruction and our assessment practices. And we have a town hall, which is an open-form Q&amp;A scheduled on September 30th. And at the conclusion of that, we'll have a parent cafe to provide some additional information for parents about the changing assessment system. And so that'll just be one of many opportunities for parents to learn about what is happening and what to expect. And the continued development for our staff will most definitely continue as well.
Where will that be?
That will be, I don't have it in front of me, my apologies. Oh, it's at Lukanszak. And we will have a flyer available, and we will, this will be widely dispersed, and it'll be available at all curriculum nights in open houses. That will show all of our parent outreach for the entire year, and so that parents can know at a glance what community outreach efforts we're putting on, where they have an opportunity to go and ask questions. And we are certainly, of course, we are available at any time for questions that parents or community has.
You know, go ahead. In the PARC assessment, I think it's important that, I mean, Common Core has come under such attack. I think a lot of it is just a lot of misinformation.
It is.
Most oftenly, like, a math problem is posed, and with a lack of explanation of how and why, some Common Core methods are done. I think, you know, to a large degree, I've actually spoken with, I think, Mr. Herter about this, there hasn't been an effective counter-campaign to explain why PARC is good, why Common Core is good. Recently, Principal Ewall shared some information about a Common Core math problem that I think was really eye-opening to people. So she put out a Common Core math problem about the perimeter of a rectangle at a state park is shown to be 42 miles. And the student is given half, a portion of the distance, it's eight miles here. And the question is, the ranger estimates that there are nine deer in each square mile of the park. If this estimate is correct, how many total deer are in the park? Explain your answers using numbers, symbols, and words. And what she further states is, here's what a student will need to know to be able to do this problem correctly. They would need to know the definitions of perimeter and area, how to find perimeter and area, the definition of a square mile, the properties of a rectangle, how to solve for an unknown in a perimeter, multiplication up to multi-digit, addition and subtraction up to multi-digit. And I think if parents were faced with this, instead of what they see in the mass media of what Common Core and PARC is about, I highly doubt there's any parent that would go, this is not something I want my kid to know how to do. You know, so, you know, thank you, Principal Ewall, for putting that out there. But I think it's important that we can, we put that information out to parents. Here, here's a PARC math question. It's not the standardized test that you're used to or that you took. It's vastly different, and I really would, I think you'd have a hard time putting that on the board and finding a parent that goes, oh, yeah, don't teach to that test. Because how do you teach to that test? You have to teach these, the definition of a perimeter and area, the definition of how to find a perimeter and area. I mean, these are great skills that, of course, we want our kids to know. By the way, that was a fourth-grade one, so if you can't do it, don't feel bad. Ask your fourth grade.
Yeah, there's certainly an increase in rigor, and to see it like that helps you clearly understand that it's a big change from what we are used to in terms of plugging a number in an equation and coming up with a digit answer, and, you know, choosing the multiple choice for it. And so we have shared some of those through our community forums last year. We most definitely will continue to do so. Thank you for the suggestion. And our staff continues to work with those, and our students continue to be exposed to those through the rigorous tasks that we've embedded into our curriculum and that we continue to get better at each and every day. So it is a big shift.
If I may make a concluding comment, I think the good thing is that, as a district, our trend data reflects that we are moving in the right direction holistically. Within, embedded in that data, obviously, particularly at the elementary level, there are some areas in which we need to focus, because there is a sporadic, it's a sporadic nature to our outcomes. What I can say is that, as a superintendent, there is an expectation that we own all of our data in a way that reflects positive trends year after year. When we establish that, then we can truly say that we're on the path to excellence, so to speak. But until then, we will look at those schools and those areas in which their data contributes to the positive trend that the district is making overall, and we'll look at those schools and those areas in which their data is not contributing to the positive trend the district is making overall, and we'll make those necessary adjustments, so that at some point in time, and again, our goal is next year, that when we, when we display our outcomes, that we have no errors in which our data is sporadic and we can't own it. Because it is our responsibility and your expectation that we do own that data, and the only way in which we can is ensure that we have trends across the board at every grade level, at every school, that would reflect that the systems and the processes that we are undertaking work universally. And finally, my last comment would be, I would be remiss in not recognizing a particular principal in her school. Each year, I look at the outcomes of our elementary schools in particular, and will go to those schools and present those individual schools and those individual teachers in their classrooms with a pillar pen for having results that have exceeded all other schools in the district. And Jody Walsh at Woodview, in one year, got an 18-point gain in reading. Now, I'm sure there's some variables embedded in that outcome that we need to look at, but overall, for Jody Walsh to get an 18-point gain in reading in one year is significant. You've seen the data. Woodview was significantly behind its peer elementary schools in previous years, and with this 18-point gain, she has now aligned her school with all the other schools, and I fully anticipate that the processes that are working at Woodview, as well as across the district, will continue to show that type of growth. So thank you, Jody, for your leadership. And more importantly, more importantly, I would like to thank the teachers in this district for the work that they do in the classrooms, because it's our responsibility to provide a direction, a vision, a mission, and supports. It's their responsibility to ensure that they enact those things in a way that positively affects our kids. And it's no secret that this district is in the throes of significant systemic change. And within significant systemic change comes trepidation. It comes with gnashing of teeth, and it comes with its share of problems. Change is not easy. So to see our teachers struggle through this change, and as a district make, we're trending in the right direction, signifies to me that, as each year goes by, even though we are immersed in the change process, it will get easier for our teachers. And data's a stubborn thing. When they see that things are working, they will buy in even more. And so we fully anticipate that we've turned that corner, and that we expect to see great things in the future. So thank you to our teachers as well, because they are the people who make the rubber meet the road, and they're the ones who are standing in front of the kids, and they are the ones who make the most significant difference. And we appreciate everything that they do in the classroom, so thank you.
Sorry, Steve. I have a question and a suggestion. I'll do the suggestion first. We found out how not well it went over when we tried to pass out at open houses information for upcoming town hall meetings and things like that, because parents just don't attend these open houses. So I would highly suggest that there's handouts, or there's something that goes home with the kids, so that everybody is, again, you can leave them to the water, but you can't make them drink, but don't just rely on having a handout at open house.
Oh, no, we have many, many methods of communication planned.
So please get it home to them physically. We're the age of electronics, I understand that, but many of our families don't do that. And then my question is, I sat up here at this time last year and looked at the results and said, we should be screaming at the mountaintops about our performance. How do these parents and our stakeholders get this information? So when they ask us, because to me, I think it's a positive thing when people say, oh, you're fudging those numbers, to make it what you want it to be. That, to me, says they got no argument, and they have nothing substantial to say, except you're full of garbage. So I know it'll be on our website, but that doesn't help everybody. So who do we direct them to when they ask us?
You can direct them to me or any of the other directors. We'd be happy to speak with them. We've actually sat down with quite a few parents in recent weeks, a couple parents who are moving in, a couple parents who are coming from homeschooling, and shared with them the data. And it was a very different conversation than based on what they had just heard or had perceived, and so we're more than happy to have those conversations.
And I don't know if it's a possibility, but at the open houses, when the principals get up there and welcome all the families and everything else, maybe take 30 seconds to brag about their performance, or the district's performance, so that you'll have a captive audience. You know, and instead of some of them talking about books that they read and things like that. that, that might be something, that might be a little bit more pertinent information.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Do we have a clear direction on our open house slash curriculum night slash are they different slash are they the same?
So at the elementary level, open house is kind of like the meet and greet. And so that's happening very soon, actually Friday. And then curriculum nights are happening within the first few weeks of school. And yes, we do have a specific purpose that will be in line for our elementary schools. And then for middle and high, we continue to have the one evening like we have always had.
So at elementary, it'll be consistent this year?
Right. Every school has open house or meet and greet and that's right before students come back so that they have a chance to just informally see their school, drop off their supplies, see their teacher, all that fun stuff. And then they get to come back a few weeks later for curriculum night where they learn more about the what's going on in the classroom, the resources, the materials, the parent involvement, that piece.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Back in one, the beginning of your slides, did I see that the K-8 subgroup of the IEP students, Individualized Education Plans, was higher than African-American students?
Sorry, I'm gonna move back to that slide so I know specifically what you're speaking to. Okay, so what you're referring to is on the far right, the comparison of the IEP subgroup, and on the far left, the comparison of the African-American subgroup. And so they are, they're actually very close, Member Campbell. It's sixty-one percent in reading and sixty percent in math, and then sixty-two percent in reading and math for IEP.
May I make a clarification, Member Campbell, as well? When we're looking at this, we defined earlier the difference between growth and achievement. And so these are, this graph represents growth. So you may see, for example, an IEP student, the blue graph says sixty-two percent of those kids have met college readiness standards, whereas sixty percent of, I mean, met typical growth, excuse me, exceeded typical, met typical, or what am I saying?
You're, okay, it's showing growth and so...
Yeah, they're showing growth.
They could be at a lower level.
Right.
But they've met their benchmarks at a comparable rate as our African-American students. It doesn't mean they're outperforming our African-American students. It means that they are growing at a comparable rate. And so they may have been at a lower point to begin initially, for example, and then we're expected to grow X amount and then they beat, you know, grew more than what we expected them to grow.
Right. One of the areas in which we're gonna have to focus is the area of student growth as it applies to para. And so when you have kids who are in the ninetieth percentile, the room for them to grow is much less than a kid who's in the thirtieth percentile, for example. So you could have a kid in the ninetieth percentile that it appears isn't growing at the same rate that a kid in the thirtieth percentile would be growing, but then the kid in the thirtieth percentile has a significant amount more growth that can be achieved than the kid in the ninetieth percentile. So it's very, it's very...
To Member Campbell's point and to that point, then, we should probably see more growth in African-American students based on where their overall achievement is.
True.
So this, I think that's a valid point to point out that as a concern in the sense that, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in overall achievement, our African-American students score below our Asian students, our Caucasian students, I'm unsure.
This is not signifying achievement.
I realize that. What I'm saying is, the argument being made is that if you're at a lower achievement level, then it is easier or you should be able to make more growth than people at a higher achievement level. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that, I know this graph isn't showing achievement, but if we were to look at achievement, my guess is that our Asian students, Caucasian students score have a higher achievement level than African-American students.
You'd be correct.
So in theory, our African-American students should be growing at a bigger rate. If they're not, what we're seeing here is an increase potentially in the achievement gap. If I'm lower and you're higher and you're growing at a faster rate than me and I'm lower, that is...
That's correct. That's correct.
That's correct, yes.
So, am I getting an echo, was that?
So, I mean, I'm just saying, I see your concern.
That's correct. The achievement of our African-American population is higher than the achievement of our IEP population. That's accurate. Hence, what you just described, Member Goojus, is the foundation of the gap and what we need to do to close that. That phenomenon has existed and persisted. It continues to exist and persist. We, however, have a, again, a laser-like focus on what we need to do to eradicate that which you just described. We're not there yet, obviously. No one in the country is there yet as well. But embedded in our beliefs and in our processes, again, when we come back to the table, we expect that those trends will represent that which we've promised the community.
And through the sophistication of our data team, we have been provided with more information than we ever have before. So we can see which students aren't making growth, we can see which students aren't making growth by typical or by more than one year and which students aren't meeting those benchmarks, down to the individual student where we actually have lists of students. And then we compare that to the supports that they're providing and look at that in terms of the scheduling that we're doing, the supports that we're providing. And so we are certainly well aware and we agree with what you've said.
Thinking about it like that, again, congratulations, Ricardo, to you and your team.
Any other comments? If not, Rachel, thank you for a very in-depth and detailed presentation.
You're very welcome.
Moving down the agenda, we are at the Legal Services Report.
No, no update.
Thank you. Association Federation Reports, AFT.
No report.
Thank you. Valadeview Council.
No report.
Valadeview Office Council. No report, apparently. Any old business before the Board this evening? Any new business before the Board this evening? Any questions from the public on actions that we have taken this evening? Any announcements by the Board?
Yes. I want to thank God for each one of our Valadeview staff members. As one of my girlfriends said, that's everybody's body for the service you will render for the 2014, 2015 school year. I pray that you've had a restful summer and that you cannot wait to get started for this school year. God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You know, I want to congratulate, as a whole, Dr. Mitchell and your team for the, for some of the positive trends that we're seeing in our growth. I think it's a departure from what I saw when I first got on the Board, both not in both results and also our attitude towards those results. When I got on the Board, there was once an attitude of, well, look at us. We're like districts in East St. Louis and other districts. We're doing better than them. What else do you want from us? And I, clearly, that attitude has changed and our results reflect that. I think it is just hard to be patient. You know, it is hard to be patient when what we all want for our kids is to be, to get the best education possible and to get the results that they need to compete in the future. So I really do appreciate everyone's efforts, in particular, those who've had some great successes. Some were mentioned earlier, I mean, by Dr. Mitchell, by others. And I think we have a focus on achieving for our kids. So I appreciate that, too. I thank, Dr. Mitchell, thank the teachers. I want to thank the administrators that work so hard to make this happen. You know, you're behind the scenes and you are often, particularly those of you that work in this building, the black badges or whatever you are called, the dark side, whatever they refer to you as. You're behind the scenes and often the spotlight of scorn when things go wrong. And then you deflect when things go well to those people, but your work is not noticed. So I appreciate all of your work, too. Thank you.
I know we've been here for a while. I got a few things that I'd like to say. First and foremost, to Gary and Mike Lopez and all the maintenance staff at all the schools, I know it's summer, but I talked to a few people today and they still work. And that means they're in the building, which makes your jobs that much harder in the maintenance side, but seeing some great improvements physically, externally, and interiorly. So our hats off to you guys as well because I don't think, over the summer, people think, oh, there's nobody in the building, so just go in there and have at it. But I know there's groups constantly in the way, so thanks to that. I had the opportunity today with Vice President Goojus to attend the new teacher orientation. And I'd like to thank Rachel Kinder, Karen Flores, Elizabeth Martinez, and Judy Nash. That is one heck of an outfit that you guys have a chance to work with. And that, today, was very much of an eye-opening experience for me. They were engaged. The new staff looks tremendous and charged. And I know it's probably the first of a few days or things like that, but a couple of them stopped me on the way out and they were excited. And that is nice to see. So Sharon, thank you for heading up, getting all those good, quality people coming to our district and making it a point to say that, you know, we only accept the best and we will only work with the best. And what I saw today was some of the best that our students have out there. So wish everybody good luck starting the new year. I know it's right around the corner. So I'll apologize now to the Bolingbrook High School staff and the Pioneer Elementary staff because you will see me a lot as a parent, but that's beside the point. Last but not least, for those of you that want some nice, fun entertainment, tomorrow night at Brooks Middle School from, I think, five forty, huh?
Three to seven.
Well, three to seven is the, yeah, but that's okay, the fun part's gonna be at the end. From three to seven, and I know there's other middle schools and Jason, I'm gonna try and get to your event as well. But Brooks has their fun night, I guess, or however you want to call it, from three to seven. But this board member will be in the Dunk Tank from five forty-five to seven P.M. So...
Same.
Huh? I know. I know. I'm sure there's gonna be people wanting to take numbers, but that's okay. So, but on a serious note, I wish everybody the best of luck. Summer's coming to a close. This is the fun time. This is what we're here for. So good luck to everybody and thank you, Steve.
There's a fee for the Dunk Tank. I would be happy to provide the first ten dollars to, unfortunately, I cannot be there. Also, there is the back-school picnic at Jane Adams at the Brack tomorrow from five to seven. And again, at the Indian Boundary Park from eleven to one on the thirteenth. So, is that correct, Mr. Pascavage? Dr. Pascavage? Is that correct? Did you get your little piece of paper yet? Good for you. Congratulations, should be in order. School starts on Tuesday. Have fun, kids. Get your hair cut, get your rooms cleaned, get all that stuff you gotta do, get shopping. Shop local if you're gonna buy clothes for school. Bolingbrook and Romeoville have some great places to shop. Spend your tax dollars here, what the heck. Thank everybody, I want to thank everybody for the efforts this evening. And Rachel, again, I know it's a lot of information in there and sometimes if you're watching on TV, your eyes probably glaze over a little bit. But she can explain it in greater detail and what it means to a lot of people in probably simpler terms and just by going through the graphs and what have you. So, and as you said, if not you, somebody else on staff can help out.
Absolutely.
The guy down at the glasses can help as well. Have a great evening. As I said, summer's winding down for the students and school's kicking in full-fledged. So thank all of our teachers when they get back here. And I guess tonight, today was the first day for the orientation and we'll go from there. So have a great evening and I think, oh, and I do want to congratulate, I have to say this, one of the mayors of our town got a hole-in-one. So I want to congratulate Mayor Clare on his first hole-in-one in forty years of golf. So congratulations, Mayor Clare. Everybody else, have a great evening and motion to adjourn will be in order.
Some move.
Second? Motion seconded. All those in favor say aye. Post same sign. Have a safe night. Thank you.